We will call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for February 2nd, 2021. We will stand now forth in Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Demano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
That brings us down to Mr. Demano and special recognitions and presentations. It's a funding request for band uniforms.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me lead pledge. Appreciate that. Give me 30 seconds to talk about something that I didn't mention. I want to talk about how proud I am of our teachers at Bridgeport High School. I can speak only of them. I'm sure they're great everywhere, but I can tell you, and I want this board to know, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how proud I am of them. They have adapted. I have 40-year veterans who have merged into the technology and delivered the curriculum. What I'm saying, by and large, I'm very proud of, and I just want this board to hear that. I'm here to ask for matching funds for band uniforms. We last got new uniforms 12 years ago. The plan was to go forward last year, and then everything got interrupted fundraising with COVID. I don't, I don't think I have to say anymore. I brought along with this Mr. Mark Allen. He's one of our parents and president of our band boosters. He's here to offer support or answer questions if there are any questions. But to cut to the chase, I'm confident that we can raise money for this project if we can get matching funds. The total cost is going to be somewhere in the 30,000s. I don't see it being more than 35,000. I have a quote here for 80 uniforms. We may look at 90. I'm confident that we can come up with the other 50% and get this moving with your support. And I don't really have much more to say. If you want to see the documents, I'll show them to you. And I'll answer any questions, Jan.
Ms. Studdler, we have funds in the contingency.
If you're asking for half, you know, matching fund, that you're not sure, it might be 35,000?
Well, here's what I'm sure of. What I have here is roughly 33. I'll just plug it in. It's 32,876. That's 80 uniforms. If we go up to 90 uniforms, because our hope always is to grow the band, then we're looking roughly 35,000.
Okay, so we're probably looking a little more high here.
Well, we're within the $20,000 range. So basically, I'll, if there's no objection, I'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to approve, you know, half of that up to the 20,000, you know, whatever, whatever it is, and we'll, we'll pay for half of what you pay.
Well, we, we're grateful. We appreciate it very much on behalf of our band directors and our band students. This makes us very happy. Thank you so much.
Yep. We'll be on the next one. I don't foresee any questions where you have to, you'll need to show up.
I can put in the, what I have here.
You made that too easy for him.
Yeah, right. What's that?
I said, I want to tell you that they made that too easy for you.
For me?
Yeah. Just come in and ask for money.
Don't you go changing.
But if there's any questions, we'll get them to you before. Other than that, you know, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to show up at the next meeting if you don't want to.
I can attest to the age of those, of those band uniforms personally. My daughter served in the band for four years at Bridgeport High School. So I, I think that it's a well-deserved change that they, they're able to bring that, to get new band uniforms.
How long were you band uniform, normally?
Apparently 12 years. My daughter was also in the band, and I was a band mom groupie, and she had older uniforms and had the opportunity to have a new one, and it was phenomenal.
Oh, yeah. 90.
It's closer to 10, it's 33, but that's okay. We may go for 90.
I think liberty has gotten to them.
When I was at FIA, I got...
They just came last year, but that's how long they've been here.
Did you have to buy the dinkles?
Not he would be under 40 servers.
Frankie, the dinkles, the shoes. She went through, yeah, two years.
All right. I'm going to give you a rush.
That's good.
Thanks. Moves us down to delegations. We have one delegation, Ryan Deans.
I love all the band talk. Right down, right down my alley.
Mr. Demano, you guys can stay. You're welcome to stay if you'd like.
It's riveting.
No, you just, you're fine.
Am I good to go?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ryan Deans. I'm the president of the Harrison County Education Association. I am here to implore you to protect the well-being of over 25% of your workforce and make sure that we are vaccinated in a timely fashion. I'm going to lay out a timetable. Please listen closely because it is full of confusion and inconsistencies, the hallmark of the state's response to the coronavirus. In early December, the West Virginia Department of Education sent a survey to employees age 50 and older to ask them if they wanted the vaccine. A few days later, the survey was sent to all employees. We had to say yes right then or wait until it was available to the general public, or so we were told. On December 11th, Governor Justice said that all healthcare and school employees would be vaccinated within the next six weeks. On December 17th, Justice discussed vaccine rollouts again, but introduced a new graphic that said only education employees 50 and older would be prioritized. This was done without any added emphasis, and almost everyone missed it. When Justice announced that remote learning was no longer an option, he told people shots were on the way. On the week of January 4th and 11th, counties received doses and started vaccinating teachers. Some counties vaccinated everybody who wanted it, while others only got small portions of what they needed. Why did this happen if we were only going to vaccinate employees 50 and older? On January 27th, it was confirmed that no more first doses were coming to schools. Anyone not vaccinated had to sign up again on the state website. We are told we are prioritized, but that doesn't really mean anything in a system where the rules are just made up. Dr. Clay Marsh confirmed through a tweet on January 30th, it could be months before all teachers were vaccinated. We can debate the merits of the way Governor Justice has handled the vaccine rollout. I know he has been on all of the major news outlets touting how well it's going. I'm here to tell you tonight that it's not going well, and Jim has lied over and over again to teachers. Governor Justice has not only lied to teachers consistently, but he, along with State Superintendent Birch and the state BOE, have usurped the power of our local elected Board of Education several times. Here are some examples. In the fall, Harrison County had to scrap our reentry plan that stakeholders collectively spent hundreds of hours developing for the magical mystery map that caused us all kinds of confusion. The State Department trying to enroll tens of thousands of employees for vaccines instead of relying on our county to do it in a more effective and efficient way, practically threatening to destroy any Board of Education who did not follow their wishes for school reentry after the holiday. Tonight, I'm asking you to stand up and fight for your employees. I'm asking you to stand up for our communities to help us stop the spread. For those of you who are in this room, have consistently asked for a school to be five days a week, I am asking you to fight for your teachers and your employees with the same vigor you have throughout this whole time. Advocate for the 400-plus employees who Jim Justice lied to. We all want things to go back to normal, and these remaining vaccinations will go a long way in getting us there. As we told you four weeks ago, through 31 delegations and hundreds of letters, we want to be back with our kids, but we must be safe. Help us fight to make that happen.
Thank you, Reg. That brings us down to, we don't have any other delegations. Superintendent, it's update. Ms. Studdler?
Okay, we'll start. We have, I want Mr. Lopez to update us on facilities, if you wouldn't mind.
I handed out another folder with some photos of the Los Creek Elementary School project. We have a progress meeting on Thursday, and you can see that the structure's coming up out of the ground well. They're beginning to tie part of that in to the old school. They're doing, they're doing a lot of work in revamping some of the space and moving some classrooms around for those programs with fit. Administration out there in both the middle school and the high school has been fantastic and supportive and easy to work with. So the project has went so far fairly smooth. It picked up steam, and we are planning on ordering furniture, working on ordering furniture. And we'll have both our child nutrition department there, purchasing director there. So we're really making progress and seeing light at the end of the tunnel. You know, again, we're, we're targeting June 1st as completion. Now, there'll still be some things to get finalized, but we're ready to get started. Is everyone doing time for June 1st? That's what, that's what is in the contract. That's what I've been told. It could be a week or two behind right now, but they have picked up progress.
They made, yeah, they've made huge progress.
And if I could just say, because we did, you know, meet this week, realize that the money we're spending on Los Creek, some of that money has touched every school in that, on that campus. I mean, this also includes a elevator for South Harrison High School. It's, it's being built along with this. So, you know, everyone in that whole campus, you know, receives some benefits of this new Los Creek school.
I mean, I don't know.
They've never had an elevator, and we had to do that in order to put up the class distribution.
To make it so. Oh, oh, oh. That's what I meant to say. Okay.
So not only is it Los Creek, but South Harrison, both the high school and middle school are benefiting too, so.
I also want to say, I, I had some confusion with myself personally as to when we originally said what the new Los Creek school was going to come to, and then realizing that some of the classrooms, you know, that was supposedly going to be able to be used, wasn't able, was going to have to dingle in and add classrooms, never knew, you know, that an elevator was going to be added, which adds to the cost. And a couple of the other things, the multi-warehouse room, also doing some work in the kitchen and everything. So it, it increased the amount, and I, you know, I said, how could we go from $3 million and something to $5 million and all? Well, that was answered for me in a little bit of a session there the other day as to why the cost went up. And as you said, every camp...
And we're not at five. We're four.
Well, four, five, you know.
Four points, about four, 4.5.
4.5, okay.
And there's still money in the contingency that they set aside, so we, we're good there.
So, so that's why I said, I, I was a little confused how it could make those adjustments. Then now every part of the campus has been touched and things that needed to be done there to accommodate this school was taken care of. So much better about that, I feel. Like, you know, we all...
So if they're, if they're done, you know, in June, if we get maybe toward the end where they're almost done, I mean, if we can arrange to, to go out there and take a look at the board, whenever it's safe for us to go in as a, as a board and see it.
Are you finished, Mr. Listen?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm kind of skipping around a little bit. I'm trying to make a sensible order out of what we're talking about. I'm going to go ahead and let, Jody Sperry is here tonight. She had sent an update about the vaccine clinics. We do get questions about how we're rolling out those vaccines, and it has been, and Mr. Deans just kind of described how we've had a rollout of vaccines, but, you know, Jody's been working diligently to get these vaccines out, and we were getting information off the press and having to set up a clinic within three or four days. So in your packet, and if you'd like to, I think she, that was sent to you, just an idea of how the vaccine clinics were rolled out and why things were done the way they were. She has, I didn't provide this with you because it's got employee information on it, but we, we have kept initially, the initial sheet was the, where they had signed up online, the surveys.
It was those.
Yeah.
The first ones there, the staff that someone...
So she really does keep a running list, and it's got, I mean, you can look on here and see exactly what's happened and where it's happened and why this person was called, and any note as to sometimes there's a no-show and you move down the list. So the first vaccine clinic really, you've got to understand, we're, we're not working with our local health department like we had been from August through. So we had not even met this pharmacy when we began to do the vaccines until the morning up. There was a phone conversation with the people, and they've been great to work with. They're picking up the vaccines and working with us, and, and Jody has brought her nurses and set up the clinics, and the clinics have went very well. But I just wanted to kind of give you an update on, because the first group was over 400, and then we had another group of 300, and then, of course, the last round was much smaller. So I don't know whether Ms., whether you'd like to say anything, Jody, or not, just, maybe you can explain the process in your mind and how it's worked.
So we have had, I think I just, I did a quick tally, about 825 vaccines that have went out so far, and we still have about 410-ish staff members that would, are requesting the vaccine, and that actually includes about 20 WVE students on there that, that are, are in preceptorship or working with student, to teachers. So what normally happens is we usually find out about 48 hours how many doses we're getting, and they have provided us a list every single time until this very last one. And then they said in an email, you're getting 130 doses, 29 of those are already assigned, so you have 101. There you go. So we prioritize, always have a meeting with Mrs. Studdler, and we prioritize how we're going to finish up certain age groups. We had a lot of people not show up at this last clinic, which was really surprising. A lot of last-minute cancellations, a lot of no-shows. And so what we ended up having that night of the 28th, our last clinic, is we ended up having a list from the state that was staff that completed that 40 and younger, that were under 40 that completed the survey. They didn't give me any demographics, so it would just say Jody Sperry, Jay Sperry, or K-12. I didn't know their birthday, and I didn't know their phone number. In hindsight, which is always 2020, I didn't think I would get down that far, but we ended up with about 30 slots that people didn't show up. In hindsight, I should have went to personnel, populated that data because literally we were just working, you know, we, we don't have a very big window of getting information and organizing these. So we had a list of who we actually had, who had signed up at the school level, that I did have demographics, so we were able to call those people. My supervisor was there. We were all making phone calls. So you had gone down the... We have went down from the oldest to the youngest of the people that we had information on. And again, things happen really quickly at those clinics. We've been having extra doses, which is a wonderful blessing, but it also presents a challenge because you don't know exactly how many doses extra you're going to get out of those vials. And so you can't count on an extra dose out of everyone. You hope you get an extra dose out of everyone. So it makes getting it down to the wire a challenge, but the pharmacy has been wonderful to work with. I really wish, I agree, I wish they would just give us enough vaccine to finish up everybody. And that was what we were told, and that's what we planned for. And the only reason we found out was I was actually planning for this Thursday's clinic, and I said, how many number one doses am I getting so I can plan my groups? Okay, I'm going to do a number two at this time, and how many people am I going to be having number one doses? And that was an after-hours email that we got, and it said no more number one. So we were equally shocked. We had no, 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 no thought that that was going to happen. So it's very discouraging. It would be much easier for us to just take care of our own staff members. We have a very efficient system, and we have a really good staff that we are working with. So anyway, it has went smooth as it can be, given the timetables we're given. Do you guys have any questions? We'll just continue.
We, the, they, they showed us on the first dose, and you said we have about 410 left to give on the first dose. But then our second dose, there's only a six-day window, is upset, or a four-day window.
So we're guaranteed that the second dose is, is what they're saying.
We don't have any worries that people won't get that.
So I even have a contingency plan in place of what happens if we don't draw those exact number of extras? What happens if the day of, I'm two doses short, because you aren't guaranteed those extra doses? So I'm working with our local health department because I don't want any staff member to be stuck and not be able to get their vaccine. So he, Mr. Bundy, who we've, you know, we've worked really well with, he is going to make sure that if we have a staff member, that we don't get those extra doses out, that we're going to make sure that they get that. It'll be at one of his clinics. So I've already discussed that with him and have that pre-arranged.
And there's nothing we can do, that we can send to the governor to say, hey, we need to support 410? There's nothing?
We've, we've had, we've submitted lists to them, and they said no more.
Is that because the state is short, or is that because...
I don't really know. We were not told. We were just told this was the decision that was made. It wasn't going to be given out to local counties after this, that last, last week's Thursday's clinic, the 28th. That would be our last clinic for number one.
And the thing is, I mean, you guys are nurses, and they've made you a logistics person.
Yeah.
So that's all, that's what you have to do, and that's really not fair that, you know, you need to plan on this, but you may not get them all. So I mean, that's, that's squarely on the state, but they, they've made you the logistics person without any ammunition to...
Yeah. I mean, we, we are, we are doing the best we can with what we're given, and we have been assured that we're going to get all of our number two doses, that everyone's going to be taken care of.
I think we should recognize, we should recognize the fact that what they've done is a really good thing.
It is a good thing. I just wish we could finish it.
And they've done a really great job with what you were given, and I think it's important that we as a board and as a community recognize that, because without that, we would have even less than 400 vaccines, 400 people left to vaccinate. So congratulations.
Thank you. My nurses have been amazing, and they've been really working hard, and we're really working towards trying to resolve. I know we, we had some parents that were not happy about our virtual days, and we're working on that for the vaccine days, maybe trying to...
I think we've, we've gotten that settled, right? We've gotten...
I have next week's planned for after hours.
This Thursday, there was a question about, and it was really aggravated because last Thursday we were off because of weather, and then it was two other Thursdays in a row, and we are going to be remote this Thursday because there's over 400 and some vaccines. And we had addressed it with the pharmacist. He wasn't willing to do a Saturday because of the...
And Friday's Mon County.
Friday's Mon Counties. There really was no other solution but to do remote days Thursday, two Thursdays in a row. But we understand there were three right in a row. The pharmacist is willing to do on the 11th...
An evening clinic.
An evening clinic because there's less vaccines, and he feels he can get them done.
And I got, and I have nurses, so...
So I will be getting that information out, because we've already put out that we would be remote the next two Thursdays, but now that he's willing to, or they're willing to do that, we're going to do the, it would be the 11th.
Correct.
We will do an evening clinic from 3:00 to whenever they get finished.
3:00 to probably close to 7:00, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at 300 that evening, but this Thursday was not possible. I mean, over 400 and some.
And you're pulling from every building and every department, and it's really...
I don't, I don't know that, that, that's an understanding in itself. You're using RCB, but we've got folks coming from every feeder area all day at different times, and we have all of our nurses tied up there. So you, we can't operate our buildings with, they can't just run and get a vaccine and go back because it doesn't quite work that way, especially if you're coming from, you know, South Harrison area. So there's, we couldn't cover that. But I appreciate the pharmacist kind of working with us to come up with an alternative on the second Thursday.
Correct. And the last one will probably be in the evening also, that's the whole one.
Yeah, because of the numbers.
Okay. Looking at the schedule I got on the email and everything, it says county office personnel being 11:45. Now, is that, does it start till 11:45 or...
Correct. We, we're just bringing them in in waves so that we don't, we're, you know, we're very conscious about social distancing, and we're really, nobody's going to get in quarantine because they come get their vaccine, right? That would be counterproductive to my position and my, my job. So if we stagger out the areas, we have a few people that can't come during their time and that, we make adjustments. But yeah, we trying to bring in the different feeders at the different times so that we have a manageable flow of traffic.
I'm in 11:45. Reason why I ask is because I'm also watching my grandchildren, so I have to make arrangements. So if it's 11:45 I'm going to be there, then...
You can, you, we can, we can work with you.
Well, okay, but I mean, I'll, I'll try and work with somebody coming to schedule time and everything, but I just wanted to make sure we will get in.
Yep, you'll get in. You will. And it will, then keeping it spread out makes it go more timely so that nobody's waiting in big giant lines.
Okay. That's sound.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for giving us the opportunity. We, we really want to make, to vaccinate everyone that wants vaccine because ultimately that's going to get us back to the normal. And if they, if they called me tomorrow and said we have 400 doses, I'd be like...
We'd have a clinic tomorrow.
We would have a clinic the next day because...
We definitely would.
We, we would love it. So if the governor comes back and says, I'm going to give you doses, we're there. We're there. We'll get it, we'll get it scheduled. But right now, we're, we're doing...
They're just really saying no at this time, that we're not getting additional school vaccines.
Correct.
I just want to say, I understand where he's coming from because as a point member, we have, you know, you have to listen to both sides. You have to come to a decision that not everyone's going to be happy, but in, at least with myself, I feel is fair. That is what I conceded to myself. As soon as all of our teachers are vaccinated, kids get back by theaters, and that made me feel like, and you know, here you are, promised. And I felt like here you're protecting your teachers, and here you're getting your kids. So I have, I have to empathize with them, and I feel disappointed because it makes me feel like a liar and like I'm disappointing, you know, my, the people in my community. And so...
I agree. And I get all, I get all those phone calls of really upset staff that aren't being vaccinated now, and unfortunately, I'm just the messenger.
You are, and you know what? And the truth of it, I'm a messenger too, but...
I mean, we are. We're just the messengers for the state.
I mean, I think the bottom line is, is that it's from the governor's level that this has happened and not our county, and you have done it extremely, extremely well, getting those out and doing everything that you can. It is just very sad that you, the, that we all feel like there's a broken promise now that was not in our control, and that's upsetting. So I understand.
Can I speak?
Yes, I may.
Okay. Listen, I, our, our argument is, is not with, is not with Jody.
Right.
It's not, it's not with our nurses. You, you guys have done an excellent job. Our, our complaint is with the governor and, and the rollout and the fact that he has lied over and over and over again.
I feel like a liar was my point because that's how I felt peace with my decision working with both sides, that I was able to come to a fair internal agreement on what to do in such a, in such a horrible situation for the students and teachers. And, and I feel like that's broken promise now, you know, to people. So I, I think it's really bad. And I'm very disappointed like he is and like so many of our staff are, but I'm not with you, of course, but with the state.
I know. We would love to be able to give doses to everyone. I mean, that's the bottom line. We, we would jump on it if we had the opportunity.
So through the health department, can teachers sign up? Like what, what other options do you know?
It's the state portal, and there's a WVE one, which I sent an email out to everyone that was still on the list.
Do we have links to that on our website or can we get with links to that?
I sent them personal emails, everyone that was on my remaining list. They got a personal email that said at this time, we're not receiving any more number one doses. Here are the two options I've been given. WVE hospitals is going to do one, I believe, at the Old River Bearman store, and then the online portal. But I don't know how long that's going to take. I mean, we, we've been given no information except here's what you told the staff. So I don't know if they're going to get in a week, a month.
I haven't heard from anyone.
I haven't heard either.
It's gotten a, a call from, so...
And the more complicated problem is if we get 50 teachers that get phone calls and they need to go during a school day, what do we do?
Cover.
And the more complicated problem is if we get 50 teachers that get phone calls and they need to go during a school day, what do we do?
Cover.
I mean, we cover, but that, that's, that presents its own unique problems, so. I mean, we will get them the shot.
Recently, they came out and said that you could take the Pfizer or you could take the Moderna. Like they would, they didn't think it could go aside, now they.
They don't recommend it, but it doesn't hurt if it accidentally happens.
I know the hospitals have a lot of the Pfizer stuff. Is there, can we call our local hospitals?
Actually, that's what, they're giving Pfizer's at the armory, that's the Pfizer.
Well, actually, they're giving both because I've helped at their clinics. And they're doing, like, one, the day I was there last Thursday or the Thursday before, they were doing Pfizer in the morning or Moderna in the morning and Pfizer in the afternoon. It's whatever they get from the, the state. And unfortunately, all of theirs are earmarked for certain patient populations. So they can't, like, I can't call up Mr. Bundy and say, hey, I need 400 vaccines. Um, they're already earmarked for populations from the state level. So it's not, they're not sitting on any doses either. Literally, they're picking up their doses Wednesday for their Thursday and Friday clinics.
But I don't believe he knows when he, Jody gets down there.
No one has a stock of doses just sitting there that I could tap into because I would. Yeah, so we will continue. Who knows, things are constantly changing.
And she's still, the nurses, when, especially on the weeks we were remote, they were helping with the clinics at the armory and, I mean.
We're still sending, we're still sending them. Like on Fridays, one of my high school nurses don't have students, they're going.
Right.
To the armory, yeah. So, all right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Keep you updated.
Thank you, Jody, appreciate that, you're welcome coming. All right, for the superintendent, I, I want to look at next, if you'll pull out the funds, the federal funds. There was a question about a grant for the additional money that we're receiving for CARES money. And you've got a handout in there, I wanted to kind of share that with you. And that'll lead into what we're going to talk about for summer school one. That's why I'm kind of skipping around. If you remember, um, last summer, it looks like this. Did you get that one? Last summer, at some point, we got that first round of funding. And that's what we purchased our iPads with. And that was a big chunk of that money, if you remember. There's, the things are listed on there, what that was, that's since been, it's encumbered or it's paying for virtual salaries. It's paying for a lot of expenses for the first round. We weren't sure what we were going to get for the second round and it came out last week. We have to go in and apply to get that, although we got together.
What was that?
Yeah, so if you'll see on the second round of funding, it's quite a bit of money. 11,953, if you can see that there. So, and they've kind of designated that for different priorities. And of course, one is the achievement gap. It's been listed in there. Another section is technology. Um, any, like additional needs that we have in technology, we can use for that. So, and salaries. If you know that because of the major drop in enrollment for Harrison County, well, for all the counties in the state. Um, if you drop your enrollment, then it looks like you're way over in your numbers because it, you just don't get the funding. You've still got all the people, but you don't, you just don't get the funding. It's not that we're adding that many more or doing that, it just makes that gap large. So part of this funding is designated to cover those gaps. We were wondering about our state aid formula and how they were going to do that. And they have included it in this grant. And when you're down several hundred, I believe we're 900 students, I mean, it's a lot of money. You're looking at several million dollars to cover salaries. So we are looking to take care of that piece, the gap in salaries, so we can maintain our current employee level. Because we don't know what next year's going to bring. And we're hoping that our students will return and we're back to normal next year. And, um, we can use, we'll have all of our employees still in place. And they also would like to see, um, like the classroom sizes, you know what I mean? We don't want to cut positions, we want to keep our classrooms at a, a normal size. There's also funding and therefore, um, either summer enrichment, not enrichment, but summer tutoring and summer programs. So that's what I wanted to talk about. There's another handout in your packet that's got red. And, and so if you remember last week, we gave you information or the last meeting on what we currently have. And then we were trying to just problem solve and think of ways that we can work with our students this summer. So there's an idea of what we're thinking about doing. Now, yesterday in our superintendents, like, we had all of the supervisors in our Monday meeting. We were talking about, you know, what can we do right now? Can we use this money right now to help our kids? So our, our goal is to get two, try to do two per building, um, teachers available in the evening. And you know, somebody had mentioned what Mount near Middle's doing, that they're flexing their time. We're thinking if we could have teachers just do that and be available a couple evenings in the school. Initially, it would probably be online, but at least students could connect with a teacher on the other side of an evening. And then when we get to in-person, they can do in-person work with them after school. So that's our immediate goal, is to get help right now and use this funding to, um, provide support for the kids. And then in the summer, um, we're looking at starting around June the 14th and running a month of, um, programs for the kids. And after we saw the, the money that was available, it looks like we can have something at every school site, which is exciting. We already have the middle school academy, so we could just duplicate that at the other middle schools. We've already got that, um, already as a, as a program. And hire teachers and just have that at all of our middle schools. We're hoping 50 to 100 people at each site, but we are, you know, that might be lofty, but it would at least be available for that.
And only, only that 8am, 8am did manage, the elementaries?
Yeah, we were looking just a partial day and focused on reading and math.
Right, what is, like, is that?
And skills.
Is this including meals for the kids?
We're doing a lunch meal and probably a snack in the morning, yeah.
I think he said he could do a breakfast.
Yeah, I think after talking about it, Chris did say, hey, we could probably provide a breakfast and a lunch. But that would require hiring a cook, which we're figuring we can do that as well. Have a cook, a custodian. Um, we can provide probably two buses per feeder area.
Now, I see that for the, oh, for the governor.
That, I know. This is all very preliminary, so if you have any.
Transportation is my whole thing. And so transportation is not currently provided.
That was for the, um, summer academy for middle school, but we're going to provide. Yeah, we'll do that for this because we've got the funding.
Oh, okay, so it will be provided.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, well, I mean, I see in the summertime for the elementaries for June 14th, where, what is the dates that would be?
July 14th to, June 14th to the July 10th.
Would that be the, is there, is that the same time period? I see, I see stuff for after hours, I don't see.
Well, there's two different options on the bottom, is that what you're looking at? I don't know which one you're looking at.
The middle school and the high school have.
Yeah, the, the middle schools, you're looking at doing the same as what Mount near Middle has, right?
That is correct. Yeah, the, the same program that we've been using. And so it would be, um, now the middle school, we would be doing four days, we'd meet at noon, the same. Now the high school, because you're running credit recovery in June to get those kids to graduate before June 30th, we can accomplish graduates. And we would propose to be the high school one at later dates, sort of like a boot camp before you start the school year, um, in late July and August. So really, your high school, you're running a credit recovery at the beginning of the summer, um, to recover that graduation credit. And then at the end of the summer, you want sort of like a boot camp, you know, ready for the school year, at the high school.
At the high school, is there anything for those kids who aren't, like, graduating, like, you say it's a sophomore?
Yes, that would be a program.
Yeah.
That's the office, we don't have anything prior to that office.
And you know, we, um, we usually, although we could, we usually prioritize credit recovery there to get those kids to graduate and recover those credits so that we get them on point. So if they failed the course and needed to recoup it, that would be that June date for your high schoolers until June 30th. And then if you wanted to get them prepped, they didn't fail, but you wanted to work on those skills, um, then that would be those late July August.
Our, our second chance classrooms, can we, I mean, they're, they're teaching all kinds of different stuff in their second chance classrooms. Could we, uh, is there, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get them help, uh, prior to the August time. Because so many students are, uh, are behind on so much stuff. I know that boot camp thing, that they need all the help they can get. Is there anything we can do with the second chance classroom people where? They can go there because they're teaching multiple subjects anyways. Is there anything that we can?
The junior she talked about would also need a license too.
We have to find out whether second chance classrooms have been doing, are they helping the principals and are they curricular students?
A lot of times, well, especially for remote, they don't have students. But when there are students in the building, I'm understanding that they're going in and helping the classroom teachers that are there because there's not kids assigned to them. Those are really for them to go in and, so it's to make the classes smaller, you know what I mean? They're using them to.
And this is just, if there was a.
Under normal circumstances, they would be.
Right.
They would have classes.
And then, you know, I've worked with Todd and like, okay, if you got a question, you can contact this virtual teacher. Because of our other teachers sometimes have, they're contacting those individual meetings. If you, if your second chance classroom's teachers, you don't have anybody, you could call and say, hey, talk to a teacher, walk me through this. So you can actually virtually utilize them with any of those high school kids in that school. I'm just, I'm just throwing out.
Yeah.
And it could be for each of our schools to do that, just so they can have, because if I'm virtual teaching, she comes in, she gets help. But I've already got my curriculum, so they're just there. But if I have to work with a separate family, individualized stuff, either they could do that or the virtual teacher could.
You mean assign them kids that they can reach out to, what's that?
Uh, like when we can't open up and have a classroom, like a class because we're short staff, I mean.
Oh, they're covering, they're using them now, they're pulling them and covering. They, they do that in the building before, usually they contact me to say we don't have a sub. Yeah, they're using those folks, title teachers, any of those supplementary type positions are being used first before it gets into us that they need somebody.
Right, I'm just, and I'm just throwing out, like, if, uh, even if I couldn't, uh, if I'm Johnny at school and I couldn't figure out something and my teacher, I, there's all individualized calls to different students.
You're talking about when the kids are there in person.
No, I'm talking virtual.
Virtual, okay.
Right, so that I can figure out something and my teacher's busy, could I, it would be great if I had a separate.
They could be used to that kind of.
Talk to that virtual teacher to help me with this issue, just to have another situation. I'm, I'm trying to think of the assistant groups for, for Todd.
There are positions, like, like the second chance classrooms, the AST positions, those are all positions that when we are either remote or even our two day in person, they have different roles this year. They're not, you know, generally, they're in assisting a classroom teacher or working with a classroom teacher when the kids are there. So they, they would have time to do that. I know a lot of the ASTs are being used for that. And they're used to make the classroom sizes smaller, so when the kids are all there on their two days, um, they pull half. I know a lot of the title schools are doing that. So you have eight kids instead of 16 kids. And then we have the AST positions in the middle schools, um, supporting those. The second chance classroom teachers in the high schools are just a little different. I'm sure they're using them to, I know they're using them to cover. I don't know what academic pieces.
Well, I'm just thinking during those virtual days.
Yeah.
Like you're doing your, I know you're limited by your amount of minutes doing virtual teaching. Then afterwards, you're, you're trying to do the individualized stuff, if those teachers were available to.
For the students to connect to.
Yeah, that's where I'm just trying, all hands.
Get them, yeah, I agree with that, we need all hands on deck.
Hey, maybe you can reach out to this person.
Well, for a person, I am looking at the positions. Um, so I, I wanted to know myself how many, um, second chance classroom teachers we had, how many, you know, ASTs we have. Because we have ancillary positions out there, so I'm looking at those.
I have a question on the second round of funding where it says technology. Uh, did we get that list from Todd about the aging computers?
Todd, you have that available.
I do have that.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it.
Well, I'm, I wasn't prepared for that, I didn't have it with me.
You can email it, but after, you know, that list is validated, hopefully the funding in this will be able, the technology funding will be to upgrade our teachers' computers.
We found that over, over 99% had a, had a computer that was 2016 or newer. We've got about eight out there that were just kind of floppits, you know, kind of in a flop somewhere or that kind of thing. We've already replaced all those, so we should be very, very close to 100.
99% from 2016. Do we know each of those have cameras or have cameras? They don't begin by?
They're all laptops.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to say this out loud, and I don't know who this is directed to. You say 99%, but I know I have spoken with a lot of teachers, not just 1%, that they have broken equipment, their cameras don't work, and they're aged. Who needs to reach out to these people? I'm not trying to point fingers when I'm saying as I want to fix.
They need, they need.
Who needs, what is the process? He's here, he can let them know as a union representative. Donna can tell the principals what their teachers need to do. Because I don't want to sit here anymore and have teachers tell me that they can't do their grading, they can't do their teaching because their computers are crashing.
They also all have iPads as well, so they've got two devices, not just one, available. Um, you know, we have a work order system, we have a help them. They can, they can reach out to those avenues. And if we're not getting the job done, they need to go to their principal. And the principal comes to me and says, hey, what's, where are we going here?
Okay, that's what I mean, man. I'm not, I'm not trying to point fingers. What I'm saying is, let's get this fixed and let's give them direction, what they need to do. So they have the equipment they need to teach these virtual classes, to do their grading. And, um, instead of us hearing, they don't have the equipment. Let's just tell them the process and let's get it done. We have this funding coming in this. And I think it's time that, you know, we quit pointing the fingers and we fix it.
Todd, right now, we have a tech assigned to each of our buildings, um, to go and do work orders and things. I'd like to see them visit the classrooms and just go in and say, what do you need? I mean, I'm talking about document cameras, printers, things. Visit, yeah, visit the classroom and say, hey.
What I'd like to see, since we have one in each classroom, if they can go to every single teacher in there and tell us what they have.
Yeah, because I don't know that it's all coming in the way we.
And then do a report that here's, here's all the teachers in our building, here's their equipment.
We have a, we have a principal's meeting next week and, uh, we will, we will bring that up to the principals and we can make that happen.
It'd just take them a day to go through it. What, what equipment do you have? Laptop, iPad? They can look at and see how old they are. And then each one of them, they only have, they're only responsible for their school that they're at. And then they can send that, you can gather them all and give us, just like we, there's only, we, what, 24 of them? Just like, uh, when we asked Mr. Lopez to give us a overview of the roofs and everything on the building, just go for technology.
Yeah, I have a standardized form. Basically, you have a principal's give to each teacher, each.
No, I'd have RIT guy to go to each one because they can look at that.
I, I think they need to visit each class.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
Yeah.
And then the teacher knows they're in the building.
Uh huh.
Oh, that's your son.
They're in the buildings, they check in and do work orders and things. I doubt that they're doing, like, individual, they're just going to that room and checking in.
If they go to each one and see what equipment they have, then that tells us where the holes are.
Right, and then we can talk about it when he comes back, when they come back, if there's document cameras or things like that. So, and then we can purchase it with them. The only other thing under curriculum was, um, the Harrison County Teacher of the Year. That nomination form has been put out and advertised and they can submit, they can be nominated by students. Um, any other employees, parents can put in a nomination for a teacher. And then they're solicited to fill out an application and turn it in. So that's happening right now.
Okay.
I have a, um, so I, I like what I see with the Harrison County Schools summer reteach models. And I like where we're going with that, but I don't want us to stop there.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I think the reality of it is, there, there will probably be a number of students that will not be able to make these summer courses. Will not be able to go to these summer courses, that may need the help in the fall. So I want us to consider a, another plan that allows us to reach out to these kids who can't go to these summer, summer reteach sessions. So that we have some way to help bridge the gap for the skills that they are not getting right now. And moving on to the next grade, uh, so that they can be brought up to speed, so that they're not just lost over and they're not lost.
And I agree, because we have a, a large segment of, of students who'll go to, uh, their non-custodial parent in another state during the summer. And, you know, you're not going to have to stay here to, to get that when they haven't seen their father or their mother and, you know, and you're, so you have a lot of that. So I agree that we need to do.
Do we need, yeah, what do we need to do?
Oh, we, we are, we've got models in place currently for extended day programs. Is that what you're thinking about or?
Some way to allow the kids that can't go do these, these summer programs to enhance their skills, to be able to reach. to enhance their skills, to be able to reach the skill level where they need to be going into the next grade. Otherwise, we've got to give them the opportunity to maybe repeat that year again.
And, and that could be done with an extended day model, like, the child could stay, if they're targeted, and stay afterward, every day. We could offer that every day, once school started. We have models like that already in place, but they're, they're not everywhere, because the funding's generally tied to a title school or something, and we could expand that and do that same model across the board.
Can we do a student assessment that will show, are they at the level they should be at right now, not, I mean, just before the end of school?
Yeah, we're doing it, we'll have an assessment at the end of the year, the summative assessment, that's going to give us data and information. And then we usually do a beginning of the year benchmark with them as well. And this summer program, we can, I'm sure we'll be assessing during the summer.
Yeah, they're going in the year, I read a benchmark right now, in February. They did a beginning of the year one, and so this will be where we'll see that large growth. We see our largest growth typically between the middle of the year and the end of the year benchmark. Mrs. Mancini told us and has repeated us, that we will be getting a general summative assessment at the end of the school year, the state will be, and so we'll have that measured as well. Plus, we have running records and a variety of things that our schools use as well. So, we are getting those assessments as well.
The assessment, would that, would that be in the classroom, or that would be on virtual?
No, they are face-to-face, which is why we waited until February, and which is why we did it in August, when we have face-to-face, and then in February, I'm sorry, September, and then face-to-face here in February. So we actually shut it down, so they can't do it remotely. So it has to be in.
That's good. I'd like, I'd just like to have us be prepared with as many tools as we can to, to bridge that gap from where we're trying to make up for lost time.
And we're fortunate that we are receiving the funding, and the emphasis is on exactly that.
Yes.
Recovery is the word.
And the other, the other thing is, I really want us to talk about the safety committees that we talked about, that you have at each school. I think it's important that we get data, or information, or input from the safety committees at each school, to, to tell us what they would need to feel safe in the schools. I know we've got a line item in this for the HEPA, possibly HEPA filters for the HVAC systems. Do we need to have barriers, do we need to have thermometer check-ins? Do we need, what do we need to do to make it more safe for the students and the teachers? And we have the money, we have some money that we can do something with.
Do those, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't get what happened with the thermometers. It was our first thing, and then all of a sudden, I didn't hear anything about it.
Do you see the scan?
Yeah, do they do all the students when they come in?
Everyone.
Every single one of them? Doing them?
I think that the school's not, they're doing them.
They do, they do visitors and the people that they're not, yeah, that's not there.
And then a lot of the teachers have them too, so, these zap students. Not that, I mean, they don't. We're not pazing everybody, we're just checking them.
Yeah, I, I think it was probably the time management, getting them all in.
Sure.
You know, I mean, and gathering them all at the door, you don't want them all packing at the door to try to get them in quickly, because just the numbers, and that's even at half capacity.
Yeah, maybe multiple entrances, with multiple scanners, or multiple thermometers, that might be of assistance, I just, with this money, I want.
Yeah, that's something that the safety committees can tell us. If they feel like, you know, if that's not something that's going to ease their mind, then we would move on and look at something else.
That's why, that's why I decided not to push the COVID committee, but I think that that's.
Individual.
Thermometers, quite frankly, could be abused years down the road, even after COVID. I mean, you had kids coming in with, shouldn't be there anymore. Barriers, do we need plexiglass barriers in between the desks? I mean, just, I'd like to get the, the data from the safety committees as to what's going to make them feel safe.
We can do that, so we can, we can use that money for that and for technology that we find out what, that we need. We are fortunate, we, if you look, I mean, the counties that, we're very fortunate for the amount that we've received, to do things. And on this sheet too, before you put it away, that, that competitive grant, that's above and beyond. There's another pot of money, and if you remember right, we had applied, and that's where the swivel cameras came from. Well, there's another pot of money that they've told us that they're going to be issuing, where we can apply for a grant, so we can also apply and possibly get money there, and then that, that's going to free up money for other things up here. So we are going to apply for that second round down here. I mean, if the money's there and available, we'll apply for it and see what we get, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'm finished.
All right, moves down to approval consent items. Make a motion to approve consent items. Move and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Brings down a new business superintendent's contract, and we did meet, I did meet with Ms. Fettler and negotiated a contract that, within the parameters that the board asked me to, and Ms. Fettler has accepted that upon approval from the board, and that costs for a three-year contract, salary of $140,000 in year one, $145 in year two, $150 in year three. And I think that's a good contract for a superintendent, but it's also not breaking the bank. I mean, that, that brings in the third year up to top ten, based on money today. So I think we're getting a bargain with Ms. Fettler for the work that she does, so we're pleased that she's agreed to stay with us for three years, at least. Is there a motion?
I'm going to say just three thought, everything you just said.
Thank you.
Second, there's been a motion, and second, any discussion?
I am very, very happy. I've been using your contract over three years, and I think you have done a wonderful job considering everything that we've been agreeing with, and the fact that you're also doing a previous job, you have just been outstanding. And now, I'm just looking forward to the next three years.
Thank you.
Anything else? And I, I echo that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, you're stuck for another few years.
No pink slip, yeah.
I have the authorization to pay private school employees, addendum to St. Mary's.
Make a motion to approve the authorization to pay private school employees.
This is for federal dollars.
Yeah, it's under law.
That we are required to pay.
For St. Mary's, uh-huh.
Then moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, policy updates, revisions to policy 1203, school board effectiveness. And that is to, it was placed on thirty-day comment, so this is to approve the, the actual revision.
Yeah, no comments, yeah.
Yeah.
No comments.
They must think we're.
Just a standard, yeah, from LSIC.
Is there a second? Second, moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, personnel, personnel matters.
Make a motion to approve personnel, personnel matters.
So moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes, I need to recuse myself, as my nephew Nicholas Scott Hope is on there for a position at South Harrison Middle School. So I refuse myself.
It's been, I, moved, it's been moved and seconded, with the notable recusable Mr. Hope. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board member comments, Mr. Dodgery?
I'm excited to do that, just have Laura's to critique. That's all I got, thank you.
His messenger.
It's very hot, this room.
Mr. Hope.
Move on.
Mr. Devon.
I'd like to thank all the nurses again, and the staff, and everyone that is out there trying to do what they can to get the vaccines in the arms. I know it's tough, and Mr. Dean's, I'm right there with you. But I, I think we've got to stay the course, we have to stay focused, and we have to be diligent with what we're doing, so that we can make it through in one piece. And that's all I have.
Got nothing to add, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Second, move and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Children in peace, go in peace.